Give us the word once you start recording.
All right.
All right, we're set.
We're set, okay. Call to order and flag salute. All right. Congratulations.
To the flag, the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, undaunted, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
It's out there someplace.
Good job, Dan.
Do we have a consent agenda for the planning commission minutes dated December 8th, 2020? Any changes?
I move, we accept them.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All right, topics from the floor. Do we have anybody out there that would like to say anything? Not on the public agenda?
We do have one person watching. She direct messaged me saying they didn't have any comments, they are just listening in.
Okay, right, moving on to term expirations. Interview committee recommendations, who do we hear from on that?
So the interview committee, at least those who could make it, nobody's here. One of the counselors is no longer a counselor. And Sheila is doing Sheila stuff, and Russ was ill that day. So I am the messenger. As you know, we had two terms that were expiring at the end of the year. Both Commissioner Cohen and and Commissioner Dan. And the interview committee interviewed five people, we had five people to interview. And they, it was pretty much Counselor Carlson and Sheila. And they felt that Dan should stay. And let me back up. One thing I think I'll use for the rest of my career is Jenny Carlson's analogy about planning commissions and basketball teams. And that you're, you know, you're trying to make that team with a variety of expertise and experiences and things like that. And we have one scientist on the group, Mr. Carey. And so they felt like, well, we want to keep a scientist on the group. So that was one recommendation was to reinstate Dan. And then Greg, Greg has been on this commission for over 18 years, 18 years and some change. And we had some, some good candidates. And one of them was a younger person, a lady. And that was Shanna Kavanaugh. And they felt like she would be a good fit. And you know, it's good to have our veterans. Greg has been a very valuable asset to this commission in his memory and knowledge and experience for, you know, over 18 years of time on there and certainly has seen a lot. But eventually you need some new blood in there and the feeling was let Greg go this time and bring in Shanna. I already let Greg know this, so this is no surprise on him. And so as a matter of protocol, what we are looking from the commission is acknowledgement and acceptance of that. So this can go to the next council meeting and Counselor Berkeley is here. And so part of this message is for Patrick to help with that, given of the changing of the guard of the counselors. But first of all, we need to make sure there's no sour grapes on this group.
All right, as I said back in October, we all serve at the pleasure of the city council. This isn't the Supreme Court. It isn't meant to be a lifetime appointment. So the opportunity to serve one's community should be available to anyone who has an interest in the qualification specific to the position they are seeking. And I'm thrilled that there was so much interest this time around for the open commission seats. Usually, we have no applicant for an opening other than the incumbent commissioner. So I think that, I think it's great. And I think that it's good to have new blood. So I'm, I'm ready to move on.
I do have to say, Greg, that we will, we will miss you and we will miss your, your, your history and background and, and your good comments. I've appreciated you on the council, on the commission, so I just wanted to let you know that.
I agree with Dan, you're going to be missed.
Yes.
That's why I want to make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I didn't make the motion. You're going to second it. You got to have the motion first, Greg. I said I won't make the motion. Who would I give a bad time to on my laughter?
Do we, do we have a motion?
No.
I'll make the motion.
It's hard to let you go, Greg. We, we can't.
I really don't want Greg to go. He is a dimension that needs to be there.
Well, we hope you're not a stranger because you can always come up in front of the council at any time, you know that, so.
They'll probably won't let me in though, they'll see who the call is from. It's one of the advantages of having the Zoom, you can keep the riffraff out. Anyway, I think there's motion for.
Just to keep, just to keep things moving, I guess we need to make a motion to accept this recommendation.
All right, all in favor to let Greg go? And who's, who's the name, the full name of the new?
Shanna Kavanaugh.
Shanna Kavanaugh to take his place.
Why isn't she here tonight?
I didn't ask her to come. And, and at the interview committee, I said, you know, the first meeting would probably be in February. So, I mean, at this meeting, Greg is still an active commissioner until
I realize that.
The closing.
I realize that.
But, but you can blame that on me if you'd like.
All right, so here we are back again. Do we have a motion to let Greg go and Shanna Kavanaugh as a replacement?
I guess I can't make the motion because it's also asking for, except for me as a commissioner.
I think Audrey made the motion.
I said I wouldn't make the motion.
Jennifer's the only one that can make the motion.
I move. I'm the new here, I'll take, I'll take the, I'll make the motion that we.
You're going to take the fall, Jennifer?
Take the fall, yes.
Okay, just over with.
Sadly, say goodbye to Commissioner.
I expect you at all the meetings, so. Second it, don't block him.
All right.
Yes, don't block Greg, he's coming to the meetings.
All in favor?
Aye.
Regglingly, aye.
Greg's out of here.
Yep.
Hey, not so fast.
Okay, I appreciate that. Okay, we have Chair Vice Chair nominations. I would like to nominate Mr. Carey to take the chair position. And I wouldn't mind myself being Vice Chair, switch roles. Don't know how that sits with anybody.
I like that idea.
Dan, how does that go with you though, as far as getting here on time?
I can get her just fine.
Okey dokey.
I've been, I've been the chair before.
I know you have.
Yeah. I can do that.
I just didn't want to put pressure on you to have to come tearing down the highway.
Well, I don't work in Salem right now, so.
Oh, okay.
Like I said on the very first, the meeting that I came when I was being interviewed for the position back in the day. They said, can you make it on time from Salem? I said, well, I actually beat Vern, his office is right across the street.
I remember that. Vern was in your office, Jennifer. And he was the last one to get here.
That's funny.
Okay, do we need a motion on this, Jacob?
Uh, yes.
I said so moved.
All right, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, new chair, great. End of your summary report.
So this is something that we do usually every January is just to review the end of your summary. I think it's part of your packets?
It's part of our packet, yeah.
I have not, I'm just looking at it now for the first time.
I thought one interesting thing was the lack of sign permits this year, and it's strictly because of COVID. It's like a very COVID-related change. I think I had in the twenties, it was all banner permits and temporary signs. So, yeah, I just thought that was interesting.
It's interesting.
Well, what I was, what always struck me was the number of appeals.
Yes.
And the number of variances, then I did your cutout list of the specific ones. I noticed that 90% of them were due to Emerald Meadows.
Right.
Yep, yep.
I think that reflects back to the zoning issues that, you know, they, we, we thought would be good. And then we got overturned on that, and then they've been coming back so much and, yeah.
It's also really related to our housing amendments discussion tonight, too.
Yes.
Very, very relevant.
Hey.
Wasn't for her Emerald Meadow, she wouldn't have had anything to do.
How's our Luba appeal going?
Interesting. I anticipate you all seeing that application, a new one in February or March.
What's the Luba appeal?
The Luba appeal is the Schlumpberger land partition.
Oh, yeah.
And it's kind of, the easement in question is, is no, is no more. And so what they're going to do is try to submit a new application, now that that's gone, and give her another shot. So stay tuned. Greg gets to miss the fun on that one.
So the, the appeals to Emerald Meadows, those, were those, I think it was a meeting I missed where we denied the variance? Is that, that?
Yeah, I think they were all denied and then they were appealed to the council.
Okay.
If I remember right.
Yeah.
Seems so long ago.
And that was when Weigant hired Stamp, I think, Andrew Stamp, to represent him.
Did, did they, did they prevail?
Yes, and they ended up not using, I think, four of them.
Oh, wow.
Subdivisions almost entirely developed now.
Didn't it come back to you and ask for more, another variance or?
Yeah, a different developer used a similar application format and applied for similar variances for their lots.
Yeah.
Yeah, when R came back.
Which the commission approved.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, any more on that? Okay, 2021 Development Code Amendments.
Okay, this is something that we tried to talk about at our last meeting and we ran out of time. And it was probably good for me because I read my memo last time and it was hastily written and poorly done. There's a couple of things in this packet, the, the memo that talks about some of the standards I want to talk about tonight. Also, the summary by chapter of all the amendments. I read the summary again Friday night and this was a early draft. And so don't make fun of me for the errors, I know how much you love to do that. But I do notice some grammar in such in there. That's the summary for information of stuff that you're going to see coming up. But one thing we need to hash out are distances between buildings and stuff like that. So let me get something up on my screen here and I'm going to share a screen, so just one second.
Jacob, I'm glad you, you commented on your report, even though I'm just a kindergarten teacher. As I was going through it, there were a few grammatical things I noticed as well. I'm glad that, I know that you're. And I'm also surprised to hear that you would be getting a hard time from any of the commissioners. I will do my best not to join in.
Patrick, we just correct them, hand them to Christina. Keep it low key.
Okay.
They keep it nose.
It's just Audrey, it's just Audrey.
No, there's also Sheila.
And it's all a good fun.
But then we have a proofreader.
Okay.
Okay, so you should be able to see a big bad memo in front of you?
Yes.
Okay. So as you know, we have this House Bill 2001, which is requiring St. Helens to do several things. One, anywhere we allow detached single-family dwellings, we have to allow two units. We talked about this a few months ago. And for some reason I'm getting some echo.
Mute, we should mute.
The council has also talked about it. And one of the things where there was a disagreement between the council and the commission was whether or not the two units should be attached, like a typical duplex, or to allow two detached units. Though divided and with an older council, and this is a good thing for you to be aware of, Patrick. The, the council, at least the majority, supported having two detached units per lot. And given that, we have some more things to talk about here before we finalize or draft code amendments. My intent is to talk to the council about the full gamut at their next meeting. So we can get a notice to the state in early February to prepare for public hearings. To get it all adopted with a little bit of contingency time in there by the middle of this year. So there's a few options that we have. And I'm going to jump to my graphic real quick. So this is what we're talking about, one lot with two detached units on it. And the thing I want to talk about is this distance between units. You know, what kind of requirements are we, do we want to go with, if any? So we have a few different things to look at, which I have highlighted in this memo. Few options, of course, there's always an infinite amount of options, but we like to break it down into a couple to help with the discussion. We can do nothing and let the building code deal with it. The typical standard for the building code is, once you get below three feet, you have to have fire-rated walls for both buildings. The other thing about the building codes, it's, there's always changes by the state, which we have little influence over. And if we want to decide our own fate, then we would want to have our own standard. So if we have our own standard, there's a couple of different options. One is just pick, pick a fixed number and well, that's the standard. Three, six, 20, 1,000, whatever number you think is appropriate. What I've thought about and our recommendation, unless this conversation convinces staff otherwise, is to have an interior separation that's based on the side yard standard. And so it's a tiered system, just like our other yard or setback requirements. So in our 10, you would have 10 feet, our 7, 7, and then our 5 and AR with 5 feet. And I have some examples to show you, which we'll look at pretty soon. The other thing, if we do have an interior yard standard for dwellings, we should probably apply that across the board with like a minimum three-foot standard for accessory structures. I think that would be pretty easy to meet without being too obtrusive to people. Well, let's see, I have all this stuff, which I'll just show you illustratively.
Jacob, back to that three-foot standard.
Uh huh.
Will the building code, it will require to be firewalls?
If it's less than three feet.
Okay, and you can have windows within three feet now? Well, that changed, didn't it? So it is three foot is, you can have windows?
I think so.
Okay.
I think it's once it starts triggering that firewall stuff. Don't take my word for it, that's why I say think so. And I can ask our building official about that, that's a good question.
Jennifer, your windows on your building were right on the property line, right?
Yeah, and I was going to have to put in expensive fire-rated windows, so we opted not to do it.
Yeah, okay, I remember that.
Yeah.
So we'll talk about that interior standard a bit. The other thing I wanted to mention is, so we talked about all those variances and that was based on this 35% building coverage that we have for most of our zoning districts, except for apartment residential, which is 50%. And, you know, all those variances were to attain a number higher than 35%. And the council is insisted on increasing that 35 to 40%. That 35% has been in the books for many, many years. And, you know, if, if we're going to change it based on these things that we're having to do based on the House bill, it makes sense that now's the time to do it to reach 40%. So there may be sour grapes on behalf of the commission. And I guess I want to know, you know, is it torches and pitchforks sour? Or is it just, well, we'll just live with it sour?
And is that an aggregate of 35% for the both buildings?
That would be, yeah, and that would be two buildings and all accessory structures. So that is the, the coverage of all buildings and structures on a lot, which in this case could be two detached, single-family structures. Well, nobody's yelling and screaming that you're pissed off, so that's kind of was what I was gauging for.
I think it makes sense with what you have to work with.
Yeah, okay. The other thing I wanted to double check to make sure you are in favor of this. In our just previous discussions, we talked about increasing the minimum lot size for apartment residential lots from 3,050, which is kind of a weird number, to 4,000 square feet. And then also increase the minimum lot width from 30 to 40 feet. Now, this makes a lot of sense if you consider that duplexes in this zoning district require a 50-foot lot width and a lot size of 5,000 square feet. So you're kind of meeting in the middle. And if you recall from our previous discussions, given this House bill, we cannot apply different standards or more restrictive standards to duplexes or two units that we apply to single detached units. And so it has to be the same number. So it kind of makes sense that we meet in the middle. I just want to make sure you're still on board with that. And the one thing that we will need to do is, well, I think we'll need to do a Measure 56 notice. I don't know if it's necessary, but it's, we're just kind of protecting ourselves. So Measure 56, back in the late 90s, maybe 2000, 98, 99, 2000, somewhere around there, Measure 56 was passed and that required a local government who changes the zone of a property, which could include, you know, battening down the hatches on regulations, tightening the vice, so to speak, to notify owners that there's a potential change in property value. And, you know, that's something we can deal with, we, we've dealt with it before. But I just want to make sure there's no change of heart on, on changing the lot size for the apartment residential zone.
You know, thinking about it, that 3,050, I think that was a typo that got into the code. I think it was actually meant to be 3,500. Because
Really?
That number just doesn't seem right.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out what the purpose of it was.
Well, I think that it was a typo that just got missed and continued on. So I think what you, I think the 4,000 is smart.
That makes sense to me.
Does this correlate to all the setbacks required? I mean.
Yes, and, and we'll show you the setbacks and some of the diagrams here. But the, the setbacks all have to be the same. There are some subtle differences, well, no, typically they are between our duplexes and single-family dwellings do have similar setbacks now, but they can't be different.
Okay.
Uh, let's see. So let's talk about those interior yards. We are going to talk about projections into required yards. But I'll save that for after going through these diagrams. So what I wanted to do was, given this tiered interior separation requirement, I wanted to make sure that all of our rules worked with each other. Jenny and I attended a, a planning training thing last year or so. And the city of Milwaukee talked about their cottage cluster standards, I think. And basically what the standards turned out to, well, what they resulted in was you could have a building that was two feet wide or something ridiculous like that. So in hearing that, I'm like, oh God, I want to make sure we're not creating standards that don't, that don't make sense. So what I did is all the zoning districts have a minimum lot size, a minimum depth and a minimum width. And so in all these cases, I'm going to go full screen here. So in all these cases, I, I took the minimum width and the minimum depth and created a lot that was more or less the minimum lot size. And also note, these are all to the same scale, so you can kind of see how they graduate. And and then applied the, the front, the back, and the side yard requirements, as well as the interior yard. And you can see this dashed line, this is the, the building envelope where you don't have one of these proposed buildings. And then having two detached units of roughly the same size while getting close to the 40% lot coverage. And so this exercise was to make sure, you know, we weren't doing something that was too stupid. So in the case of our 10, we can get to that coverage and still have a little bit of wiggle room. And these are, you know, 2,000 square foot, 2,000 square foot in the footprint and go up to 35 feet high, that's a lot of, that's a lot of livable space. So that's our 10. Our 7, 20 in the front, 20 in the back, just like our 10. And then 7 in the sides, 7 in the middle. A little bit of wiggle room on this one. We kind of max it out, but still pretty good sized footprints. And the R5 zoning district, now we're getting a little smaller. 20 in the front, in this case, our rear setback is reduced to 10, that's just the standard. And then our side setbacks are 5, and of course, 5 feet in, in between. And in this zoning district with the 40% lot coverage, you know, we can get to that lot coverage and still have some wiggle room. Now apartment residential, I took both the standard that we're talking about, the 4,040 and the old standard, so we could kind of look at those. So this is the proposed apartment residential. proposed apartment residential standard. So you see, this is forty, not thirty. And these are both four thousand or a little bit more. Remember, the lot coverage is fifty percent in this case, so it's way more. And at, at this standard, you can get close to that forty percent and have a little bit of wiggle room in this one and then, you know, achieve it entirely here without wiggle room, but still getting thousand square foot buildings.
Is that five foot opening between the two?
Yes, that is a five.
Does that, does that require a firewall?
That would not. Because the, it exceeds three feet and thus you wouldn't require a firewall. The other good thing, the other good thing about five is, you know, this is the foundation and sometimes there's projections and we'll talk about this soon, but things like eaves and a typical eve is one foot. And so if you have two eaves, one foot, then you still have a three-foot separation between the two. Uh, now we'll go to our apartment residential zone as it is currently. This is the three thousand fifty, which may be a mistake per Commissioner Cohen. And then, you know, the, the thirty foot width. And in this case, you know, given that interior yard, you know, I couldn't even get to forty-five percent. So another potential argument for the increase is just, just makes you, gives you full utilization of your standards, although, you know, just means lot coverage isn't in the way. So that's the tiered system. Um, let's talk about it. Do you favor that? Do you think we should just not worry about it and let the building code take care of it?
Jacob, I've got a question. So you've got these two separate living units and you always require parking for each living unit. Now where does that come into play for these buildings?
Well, yeah, and that's a great question. The parking could be in this, in the setback. You could have a couple of spaces here. Or you could have a garage that takes care of it.
Okay, we'll go to the, go to the other one on the page there to the right where I'm assuming the seventy feet wide is, is the width of the lot. How do you get to the building in the back?
You teleport. I'm just kidding. So one thing to remember is the state's saying, we cannot require no more than two spaces for these, for this development. That's it. Currently, we can require four spaces. Two per unit, or if it was a duplex, it would be four spaces. And this bill prohibits us from requiring more than two for any single-family dwelling lot or duplex lot, or in this case, a two-unit lot. So in this example, you could have your two spaces here and the person would walk to the back. Or maybe there's, you know, with a ten-foot yard, you could have an access drive to get back there for, for maintenance and stuff like that.
Pretty much, this whole thing is for existing lots and buildings. I mean, it seems to me if you were a builder, you'd look at this and well, let's make it an attached duplex and be done with it.
Yeah, like I said, this is just an exercise to show this, to help talk about it. And usually with an existing development, it's gonna be hard to get two equally sized units on there. I think you'd have to start with a, a clean slate for people to do this. And, you know, no lots are perfectly rectangular like that either.
I think from a real estate standpoint too, Russ, that people would rather have kind of the traditional single-family house and maybe cottage or something that's rentable or more on the lines of an ADU. If it's their primary residence.
But the main question is, is, you know, what do you want to do with this? So we have the tiered system. You can pick to, pick a fixed number or just not pick a number at all and let the building code worry about it. So that's kind of the, the question for the commission on this one.
I think I like the tiered, the tiered the best. The ten, seven and five.
Me too.
Seven, five.
Yeah.
Three is not wide enough. That's an alley.
Can you still project into that five foot?
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that next.
Yeah. That's what he said.
Do you guys like it? Cause it seems neat and clean or just curious?
Well, I'd like it because it actually, you know, requires you to meet a certain standard, whereas leaving it and then to, you know, we're gonna be, the commission is gonna be having all kinds of problems with people coming in and saying, well, we want it done this way, or I think it, it needs to be set in stone, what, you know, pick a number.
Yeah, I agree.
I think it should be bigger, like six feet.
Well, then you have to give up some of that side yard.
You didn't give up the side yard, you would give up the, between the buildings.
So,
So you're saying reduce the amount of space between the buildings?
No, make it six feet rather than five.
Six feet all the way across the board?
Oh.
No, let, let's go ten, seven, six then.
Oh, it's the AR. What would that be?
So our ten would be ten.
Yes.
Our seven would be seven. And then, at least illustrated here, R five
Would be six.
And AR are both suggested as five.
Yeah. What, what I, what I like about at least five is whether you want to get a long walk through there or walk through there, it can have to be big enough to be usable, otherwise it's, it's too small, it's too small. So if it's got projections of, of bay windows sticking out or something and gets it too narrow for a person to walk through, it's kind of unusable space.
That's right. I mean, why not just do a duplex? An old style duplex, sharing a wall. I mean, it, it just doesn't make sense to reduce it so much that it's unusable.
Right.
Say Jacob, I remember years ago, this is probably back in the early two thousands when the state came in with the rules regarding solar and setbacks from other buildings so that, you know, with the, for the sun and everything. Has that all been thrown out by this new rule?
Those rules are pretty tough to meet in subdivisions because the problem is when the subdivision, we're dealing with these infill lots. There's only so many places you can put the streets. And those solar access rules are still around. But they're not readily enforced.
Okay, so that's been thrown out for, for the latest, huh?
It's, it's not really thrown out. But one thing that we couldn't do is hold duplexes to a higher standard than single dwellings.
Right. Let me, let me ask you this question. Has the fire district commented at all about this idea in regards to the spacing between the buildings?
Um, no, and, and the Columbia River Fire and Rescue just hired a new fire marshal. So we actually have a dedicated fire marshal again for CRFR. And I, I think he's just getting up to speed.
Yeah, because I'd be, you know, I mean, I would be interested to, to, you know, know what their ideas are, recommendations or comments, whether or not, you know, they, they qualify as experts for the state's, you know, requirements. At least they might give you some guidance.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
I mean, I, I agree with, with everything that's been said. I think that you need a minimum amount of space. Or just go back to the historic duplex where you're sharing the wall.
And I am going to, now that the council has a couple of new members, uh, next week I will ask that question again, the detached versus attached. I'm gonna assume that they will still recommend allowing the detached. But obviously they're the legislative body. I wanna make sure they're gonna be reasonably happy with what we present to them.
What was the reasoning on detached by the city council?
Just to allow more options for people to develop. And, and really, I can quote the mayor as saying, well, why not? That was the mayor's quote.
Why not?
Yeah.
That covers it all.
Yeah. I thought so too.
Good. That was, you know, that covers it all.
I think it's great.
Oh, and, and there was a comment, there was a comment about when you have shared walls and quality of life because of hearing other people's noise. That was a comment that came from Council President Morton. So if you do have a separation, then you know, you're not hearing someone's music that you may not like, or maybe they're a tap dancer and you don't wanna hear that tapping at three AM.
They're clogging.
Let me tell you something. These new subdivisions, they put up walls that are so thin. Person on the one corner sneezes, the person on the, the other far corner, they hear them.
They bring the Kleenex.
Well, they say, God bless you.
So, um, thinking about, I think, what is it? Greystone, that new subdivision? I just recently toured those and those attached breezeways. Was that their way of getting around that? They're still considered attached, so I mean, you're still reaching out and touching each other's wall, it seems like with those breezeways, so.
Yeah, yeah, those. Whether or not that means meets the intent of the law is a question, but it does me, it does meet what the law says in that you have two dwellings with the shared wall. And there was a lot of work, even though they're not necessarily functional. Uh, they are fire rated and the building official, because they're on a property line, made sure that they were. So there's a lot of work that went into those weird funky little things that were put there just to be able to call attached units.
Well, and the reason I mention it is because if we said attached, if for some reason the city council changed their mind and we said we want attached and they agreed with it, if that's, that's somebody's workaround, it doesn't make sense to require it being attached.
Yeah, that becomes a question of, well, maybe we need to define attached a little more. Well, just need to define it better.
Yeah.
You know.
The fact that they're willing to go through all of that work just shows that the market supports having that separation, though. They wanted to sell products that had a separation between their feet. So I think allowing it, it makes sense.
And they've already opened up new lots because the first ones are selling so fast, so.
Yep.
Oh, and Greystone?
Yeah, they're opening up, they have a couple of the lower end ones that have sold out already. So they're opening up some more lots.
Well, that's good, good for them. A lot of work that went into that subdivision.
I mean, I'd rather see it all clustered in the center of the lot so that it didn't infringe on, I don't like this House bill at all, so it wouldn't infringe on your neighbor. If you wanna be all shoved together close inside your own lot, fine, but I don't know. And I realize it's probably, I don't know what the percentage will be. It'd be hard to meet setbacks if you already have an existing home to put another dwelling there. So maybe we're just talking about primarily new construction. I don't know.
And that's a good thing to mention. You know, when the ADU rules came out, you know, a lot of people saw that as a salvation. But if you look at the amount of ADU permits, even, even in some of the bigger growing cities like Portland and Bend, it's still a very, very small percentage. So this provides the option. It doesn't mean we're gonna see subdivisions filled with two detached units. So Russ, did any of this discussion make you think about it some more, your, your six-foot idea?
Uh, I'm with Jennifer. I don't think it's a, I mean, we're for, we have to do this, where the state of Oregon has mandated it. Is that right? We have to look at this whole thing.
Well, what the state is mandating is that we, at the very least, allow duplexes. We don't have to allow this setup. We can say, well, you know what? Oh, great, fine. We have to allow duplexes anywhere. We allow a detached, single-family dwelling. That's life. We're a city greater than ten thousand square feet in the state of Oregon. That's what we have to deal with. We are not obligated to allow the two detached units. However, our legislative body, the council, has directed us to pursue that. And unless our two new counselors next week can sway that opinion, and so I hope you're listening, Patrick, for stuff that's coming up for you. Then we have to deal with this detached situation.
So Jacob?
Yeah.
So do I recall that when the, the vote, the council voted on this, that it was a three to one vote and a council member absent when the vote was taken?
That's correct. Council Carlson was absent. Councilor Topaz was in disfavor and the remaining counselors, the mayor, Council President Morton and Councilor Locke were in favor.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I think I recall sitting in on that, that meeting and that decision. Okay. Thank you.
I think as far as separation between the buildings, if they're not gonna be attached, let's spread them out to at least six feet.
Yes.
Um, I mean, if a fireman needs to put up a ladder in the second story, he can't climb it straight up. He's gonna have it lean to the building or whatever. And you, I think six would be the minimum for that.
So Russ.
And then you've, you've been talking about the, what you can build out into any of this?
Right.
That's another three foot?
No, it's a foot overhang, but that would give you four feet between them. Am I correct, Jacob?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about overhangs. In some cases, those, so the, the basic overhang rules say that you can project into a required setback up to three feet as long as you're not reducing, as long as the portion of the building is closer than three feet to a property line. And with this interior yard concept, we would apply that to be the same. Now, tip, the typical projection that we see is one foot eaves. Now, once in a blue moon, we'll get some old house from the seventies that's moved in and has some huge eve on it. But that's, that's not very common at all. I'm not even sure if Jenny's seen one of those since she's been here. And I haven't seen one in, in a long time. But typically it's, it's one foot. And so if you had a six-foot separation and assuming you have the one-foot eaves, then that would leave you with four feet for sunlight and such. Now Russ, my question for you then is, are you recommending six feet across the board or a tiered system, but instead of the five-foot, six-foot?
I would go for the tiered system, but at the bottom, it would make it six.
That's what I said.
Okay. So Audrey and Russ obviously are on the same page. How about the rest of the commission?
I can live with that.
Can we make it so the, the eaves on, on the interior like that can only go a foot? Cause that would still give it a four-foot lean, wouldn't it, Russ? A ladder?
Yeah, that would, yeah, a foot. And then there's gutters and so it gets, it gets narrow, but I mean, uh, I think just for light and air coming through, don't make it too narrow. And not to say that someone's And not to say that someone's gonna build the maximum amount on that either, but I think you just don't want them slapped together. If, if anybody wants to take a trip out to Murray Road in Beaverton, right across from Nike, there's some two-story buildings out there that are about three foot apart, and it's,
Yeah.
It's nonsense. It looks horrible for one, but.
They went up overnight, too.
Oh, yeah, they always do.
That was a California builder.
I don't see a builder coming in and looking at this plan going, "Well, that's really great. I want to do that." He's gonna make a duplex.
Yeah.
So we can address the parking. I mean, if, if you've got an existing house in the front of the lot, and you build something in back, yeah, that's a, an ADU, basically. But it, I don't know, it just doesn't seem like it's really serviceable to put something in the backyard there, and expect it to be more than, you know, mother-in-law suite.
So Jacob, these drawings you created from the minimum lot size, like in R5, because I know a lot of the R5 zone really has 58 by 100 lots, right?
Yes, a lot of, a lot of the R5 lots on the east side of town, east of the highway, are either 58 by 100 or 57 by 100, but 58, 100 square feet is hugely typical.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, in this case, I went with the, the minimum lot size.
That makes sense, yeah.
Just to, for the exercise of, well, are we creating something stupid?
So I'm in agreement with a, a minimum of six feet between. You asked that question.
Yeah, in R5.
Okay, so it sounds like everybody's on the same page.
Yeah.
Okay. So let me take this note here.
Jacob, it might make sense to jump to the text amendment about eaves, too.
Yeah.
I think that was just.
No, that's, that's the next part.
Okay, cool.
That, no, that's, I wanted to save that for, I wanted to get this discussion with and then go back to that. All right, so this is always the commission's favorite part, reading code, discussing code, "Oh, we're gonna dream about code tonight. God help us all." Okay, so what I did is I took this section in our code, and if it's new language proposed, it's in green. If it's to be stricken, it's in red. And then I have this box underneath each, which is my own narrative, to help explain, you know, what's going on and the recommended change. So first of all, this is a classic thing that we use all the time in reviewing house plans. And this is the, allowed to project three feet into a required yard or setback, provide it's not reduced to less than three feet. And so the way that would apply, if you had two buildings next to each other, let's say you went with the six feet, you couldn't have eaves more than 18 inches on either side, which is ample. And we are creating, we do have a front, rear, and side yard in our code. We would be creating a new interior yard for that. So that's, that, that basic standard, and.
It doesn't mean that one house can have a two-foot eve and the other house can only have a one-foot eve.
You could do that, too. Yeah.
Whoever's there first gets a bigger eve.
Yeah, luckily they're on the same property, and so you won't have two property owners, you know, arm wrestling over that. But, but yes, yeah, you could, you know, mix and match between the two, as long as you still have three feet there.
I guess it, it just seems hard to, hard to require one or the other for one or the other, unless they were being built at the same time. In other words, are you assuming that these are gonna be built at the same time by the same owner?
Well.
Oh, I saw what I was gonna say. This wasn't fair. I wanted a bigger eve, you know, that guy got it.
Well, that kind of stuff's always gonna happen.
Yeah.
But if it's on the same lot, then you don't have two owners, you know.
I guess so.
The owners in control of their own fate.
All right.
Aside from the, you know, whatever the government regulations are, of course. So that's, that's our primer as far as projections. Now, this next one. So fireplace chimneys and stuff like that are allowed to project currently into a front, rear, or side yard. And we would include interior to that. So basically the same thing as the, the eaves. Now, this next one, number three. So this is one, notice that we're deleting this here, and we're not getting rid of it. We're creating a new one to make the language clearer. So what this says is you can have porches, decks, and things like that. And again, it goes back to this 36 inches oh, in height, excuse me, that's not projection. And it allows you to project into a rear or side yard, provided, you know, you keep that three feet. We're not proposing to change that, although one of the discussions we may have is if we have this kind of setup. So in, in this case, in this lot, this is the front. This is the back. And these are the sides. And it doesn't matter where these houses face. Our code says that in a corner lot, the narrower frontage is considered the front for the purposes of determine, determining your yard requirements. And so here and on the other standards, should, because of this potential scenario, and even if these were attached, you could still have this, where, you know, should that porch exception be allowed on the exterior side, and not just the front and the rear? So let me go back to that code section. So this is where, and I'm gonna be asking this question quite a bit coming up. Do you want to allow open porches, decks, or balconies to be able to project into not only the rear and back, but also the exterior side? And do you even understand what I'm saying?
You're talking interior?
Interior yard, is that what you're talking?
Uh, no, 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 not the interior yard. This, this, right now, this is talking about the front and the rear. So it wouldn't apply to the interior, and I don't think that makes sense. Although if you think it makes sense, let's please talk about it. I am, I am suggesting that for corner lots, so in a corner lot, you have the, the the one side, and then the side facing the street. And so we kind of call that the exterior yard. And should this open porch exemption apply to that exterior yard? So let me go back to this graphic. So front, back, this would be the exterior yard here. Or do you have an opinion at all?
So what, what's the problem, what would be a problem with having a porch on the side? Except it's facing another property owner?
If you put a porch there, you don't, you're cutting down the little room you have between them. You're already talking about only six feet.
I don't mean, I don't mean in between, not in between.
Oh. Okay. You're not talking about the interior.
No, not the interior.
Jacob, what would be the example of a, I highlighted this as a question when I was going over this, where it says the extension is screened from abutting properties. What's the example of screening on that?
Um, arborita.
Okay.
Fans.
Okay.
So maybe I'm not, maybe I'm not understanding it, then. Where, where, where does the code say that porches and balconies can be, again?
If you look at your screen, at this number three here.
Porch is behind the.
That is not a.
It's not high.
It's not between the buildings.
No.
No.
Well, it says 36 inches in height, but it's in width, isn't it?
Well, that's just, that's saying that, you know, if you have this means an open porch. So if it's a covered porch, it's definitely more than 36 inches in height. This, this exception is limited to things that are not very high. If they were high, it'd be hell, it wouldn't be easy to screen. Although balconies could be elevated, but still, they're still 36 inches in height, I suppose. And we don't use this one very much, although it has come into play recently. It's, it's, it's pretty limiting. And I think that's why, when I was reading it, I didn't, you know, recommend that flanking street side like I do in the, in the next ones we're gonna cover. And we could, maybe we can go back to this. This may make more sense when we cover some of the other ones that are in this section.
I don't like this one at all.
You just want to gut it?
Am I the only one that doesn't?
Jacob, did you, and the ones you said you just experienced, what, what was the situation there?
When I said that, I realized, oh, that was for a covered porch, so. Jenny, have you used this one recently?
Yeah, I was just thinking about it. In the examples that you showed earlier, can you go to an R5 or an AR1?
Oh, the, the diagrams?
So if the one on the right wanted to build a low-line deck into their side yard, I guess, they, like, an uncovered deck, so just a patio, basically, no cover, they could encroach two more feet in this example. It wouldn't be that generous. And that's, I think, why we don't see it very often.
But it doesn't apply to the side?
Exterior side, so if that were a corner.
Oh, yeah, if this was a corner lot. Gotcha.
I was just trying to have them be able to visualize it with something you had in your packet.
Yeah, so pretend, pretend this hand is the low-line porch. So in this case, now, if this is a corner lot, this would be 10 feet. And so that little porch could go into that yard just a little bit.
About on the left?
Uh, no, because that's not a corner lot side, unless you want to change the rules to allow that, too.
No.
But yeah, as Jenny said, we're, we're pretending that this is a corner lot for the purposes of this example.
So that was Mike, that was what I was confused about, so why can't, so that the, it doesn't allow a deck on the side if it's not a corner lot? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, right now, it doesn't allow it on the side at all. That's why I put this here. So right now, you couldn't do the open porch on this side or this side. It would be strictly to the front and the back. What we're talking about is, okay, do we start allowing these exceptions on the exterior side of corner lots? So let's say this line here, this edge of the walkway, was the, the setback. So this would allow them to have an uncovered porch that goes out three feet beyond this line here.
Just on the corner lot, is that right?
That is the discussion. Currently, it is, it applies to the rear, oh, I'm sorry, there's, there's too many damn rules.
Yeah.
This doesn't apply to the front. Like I said, we don't use this as much, and I'm, I'm confusing them. This applies to the rear. Now, okay, I totally misled you. I'm totally wrong. We spent way too much time on this one. I, I led you completely astray. This applies to rear, and I should have read my own notes. So let me back up. We're taking this one and putting it into its own category, because that addresses covered porches, which is something that we deal with all the time. And that's the one that says front and rear only.
So really, on this, all we're doing is we're changing the word deck to extension. That's the change as current. Lee written.
Yeah, yes.
And moving the last sentence to the next, to number four.
Yeah, I just wasted 10 minutes of your lives.
And the deck, and the deck can go on the rear, on the side yard, then.
Yes.
All right. That's why I was confused. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, and I, I was clearly confused as well.
I'm feeling better now.
Me too.
But, but, that was the segue to this one. So we do use this a lot.
We all have to leave now, Jacob.
Do you ever find yourself trying to scroll the mouse up and make it move faster?
Yes.
So this is, so this one talks about covered porches. And in this case, we're, we're proposing to apply it to front and exterior sides on corner lots. Currently, it only applies to the front yard. And, and given these amendments with two dwelling units, the greater potential to have two faces, primary faces on these residential buildings, our recommendation is to allow it on the exterior side as well. So there's two things. We're improving this language here, because it doesn't say open porches, it just says porches. So our interpretation of that is, is that it's meant covered porches. So we want to make sure it's, it's clearer, and that it's a porch only, not, you know, living space or something like that. And then we're adding that it applies to the front and to the exterior side, as we painfully described erroneously on the previous standard.
Do these covered porches, are they included in the lot coverage of the building?
They would be, that, yes. So what do you think about that? You think we're going in the right direction?
I'm good with that, now that I understand it.
Yeah, I'm good with that now that I get it.
Yeah, now that I get it, yeah.
Okay, great. So this next one, so this is, this is, talks about unroofed landings and stairs. Where can we put landings and stairs? Currently, it applies to the front or rear. And we are, just like we did before, wanted to apply it to the exterior side in corner lots as well. I'm assuming if you're okay with the porch, you're okay with the unroofed landing and stairs exception as well. The other thing that the landing does is it helps determine where your doors face.
How is the, how is the unroofed landing any different than a patio, a, a non-roofed patio?
It, well, a landing is the end of stairs. A patio may not lead anywhere, it just may be for recreation.
So you're anticipating that it's, it's entering the house, going upstairs or something, and there'd be a lot of traffic there, so you don't want it on the side.
Yeah, and this, this comes up every once in a while, uh, not too often, but it, it has come up.
And typically, exterior sides, corner lots, have a larger setback, and so that's why that addition there, I think.
So I'm gonna assume everybody's cool with that, given the discussion we had on the previous one. It's, it's similar in nature.
I am.
Yes.
Okay, well, I know when Audrey's nodding her head, I know we're on the right track.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so this next one. This one says, well, regardless of all your exceptions, um, a building is supposed to be no closer than three foot to a property line. And where this applies commonly are accessory structures that don't require a building permit when they're small enough to not require a permit. Um, the standard yard requirements don't apply, but you still have that, well, nothing should be closer than three foot. There's two parts to this. One, clarifying the, the language. Because in a lot of cases, you want the zero-foot setback, um, commercial industrial applications and, um, attached single-family dwellings. If you have a setback from, uh, property lines, that doesn't make sense. And so we're just putting in this clarification language when there is a yard requirement. And then, because we're talking about interior, um, yards in addition to, to the property line, um, to another building or structure. And that's when we talk about those eaves from two opposing buildings coming together and making sure that you have, uh, three foot of separation between those eaves or, or other architectural projections.
Okay.
So you dig that?
Yes.
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 Cool. Well, that's what I wanted to talk about, um, to be prepared for the council's meeting, um, next Wednesday.
Jacob, is there any, I thought we had some discussion on it of, um, that then, not an accessory dwelling anymore, but the second unit needs to match the first one, like, I mean, in theory, could somebody, as long as they meant setbacks, could somebody move a manufactured home into their backyard?
Yes.
So I know, like, Portland has requirements on, uh, windows and all kinds of stuff. As far as matching what's there, I suppose you could cover it in new construction with maybe covenants and restrictions saying that it has to match or something, but sure would be a shame to see. Just so people are getting a second unit in there, that they bring it in substandard construction compared to what's there.
Why would we allow what Jennifer's talking about, considering if you build a, what, a shed or whatever, then it's gotta have the same siding as a house and all the rest of this?
Yeah, I think it should.
We're gonna allow, uh, manufacturing in the backyard. That doesn't make sense.
Yeah, doesn't make sense to me either.
And there, there's, there's a couple parts to that. First of all, our A, our auxiliary dwelling unit rules do have those similar architectural standard rules. In this case. The, the problem with this is treating two units and one unit's the same.
But this is a separated duplex. You wouldn't build a separated, I mean, duplex with one unit. What, stick construction and the other one wheels?
Um. No, it's just a matter of the limitations on what we can do. So we can't pick on two units. We can't have higher standards for two units. Now, we could try to put some clear and objective stuff in there. But anyways, so that's, that's one of the issues we face. Now, when we first talked about these rules, um, with the commission back in October, I think is when it was. Um, we, we kinda started talking about design standards, uh, like glazing standards, um, you know, doors facing streets. And, um, there was a variety of ideas in there, but when we got to the council, the council wasn't very interested in that stuff. And, um, there's not a whole lot of time in this case. We could try to pull in some of those ADU appearance standards with the two units. And see what the state does. If, if they push back on that, um, it, it may not, may not make it.
Think we oughta try the council again and put in front of them, because a, a, a design standard is, is good. I've seen what's going on, and it's, um, it's, it's not good for the city, especially, you know, the waterfront area and that sort of thing. So if we can approach them again, if that's how we can do it, and there's new members, so.
So, so, so Russ, here, let, let, let me clarify. I guess it goes back to when Jacob said the city wasn't, or the council wasn't much, much interested in this. That they weren't much interested in setting standards, and, and Russ, you're saying that you're s- thinking that it would be important for the council to set some standards with these AS, um, ADUs?
Well, in, in the architecture itself, uh, you know, design standards for, for the whole city. Not, not really strict, but at least, I mean, they didn't, didn't even wanna hear it, from what Jacob tells me. And it would be nice if they would be open enough to, um, have us look into something and come to them with more detail or whatever. And, uh, I, I think it, we need to approach it again, because I think it's just going down the road and letting a lot of things happen that, um, are detrimental to people driving down the street. I've seen some developments, uh, that are not gonna make this city very attractive.
Yeah, I totally agree.
I agree with Russ.
I definitely.
But I don't know that they'll listen to us yet.
Well, this is where Patrick is gonna be, uh, our, our voice there. And, uh, we, I, I just, at this point in time, I'd like to say that all of us on the commission have put in a lot of time and make decisions and talk this over. We go to midnight sometimes talking things over and really come with, with, with all these great people. We come to a decision, we go to city council, and in two to three minutes, they exit, and, um, we've seen this with subdivisions and other things. And, um, we're the ones who put in the time in, and to have them not even consider something, um, is frustrating. So you've got your job for us.
And I'm not trying to pick on manufactured homes. If, there's already manufactured home there, and it matches, and it just seems like, I mean, that's an e- easy example to visualize for somebody to take back to the council to say, grandma needs a house, right? So, most cost-effective, and we can meet the setbacks, let's bring in a manufactured home.
And.
Has allowances for, uh, grandma homes.
Right, hardship stuff, right?
So, you know, this is a totally different market, and definitely it deserves to have basic, at least basic, uh, requirements, just like any other, um, development. I, you know, I, the council is definitely opening itself up to all kinds of problems down the road.
So, Greg, thank you. Uh, so one of the things I did when I, during my campaign in this, this COVID time, um, I couldn't go door to door, but I did try to make a point to at least walk or drive through every, on every street, uh, in, in town. And I, I've since discovered there are a few spots I missed, and, um, I, I would agree with a number of things expressed here, is that over the years, it seems there's been a lot of, uh, things, put in or, or, you know, allowed or permitted that perhaps if we, we did have some minimal standards or design standards, uh, to, to, to meet, would help, uh, that. And I do wanna say, too, I, I appreciate, again, the work you're doing as commissioners. And my default position, of course, I cannot here, you know, make a commitment to what I would or would not do at the council, but I, I guess my default commission is to have deference towards the decisions that you, as the commissioners, make and that, and, uh, and that the new commissioner will make, because I, I do, uh, recognize and honor, um, the work that you do, do. And, um, so I, I would like to say that to you, not only being your lia, I mean, being your liaison to the council, but when, um, I, I sure always hope to show, um, respect and consideration in, in recognition of the work that, that you have done on all of this. So my, you know, my default position, subject to change, would be to give a, a preference for what, um, you know, what you come to the council, council with, um, so.
So when I'm watching city council meeting, uh, you'll be backing us? Is that what you're saying?
What I am.
I'm nearly near to the wall, is what I'm doing.
So, 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 no, what I'm saying, Audrey, is that, that, when, when you leave this, that, that's, that's my, but I think, I would hope that the council, yes, will, you know, be, uh, deliberate on things. I don't hope we would not willy-nilly just dismiss it. Well.
Good luck, Patrick.
Well, thank you. Um, I'm still right-eyed and bushy-tailed, so. So, right-eyed and bushy-tailed, but, um, uh, anyway. We'll be Chelsea.
I, I will say, though, you know, part, part of asking that several months ago was to gauge things, to see what we would work on. At this point, um, because of this timeline, we have to adopt these rules. Really spending a lot of time on design standards to put them in with this batch, um, is, is probably impractical. Um, it doesn't mean we can't work on it later.
Yeah, I think as we have it on the agenda, where we can come to it when we can.
Sure, and we, and, and through this, we do have, um, some more examples that, that we can, uh, look at. But we'll make sure the council is aware of that desire.
Okay.
Well, one of them is, aren't they? Cause they're right here.
Sounds, design standards sound good to me.
So, um. Great, that's what I, that's the feedback I wanted. Um, unless you have any more comments, uh, we can move on.
Okay. Uh, planning director decisions, president's email. Does anybody have any questions on those?
Yep.
Okay, planning department activity report.
It was a very busy December, if you've read everything going on.
Yes.
I remember in the early part of December, Jenny and I were looking at each other like, wow, this is crazy. It did, it did quiet down a little bit, um, between Christmas and New Year's. If, if you note the date of the memo, um, for the, uh, standards we talked about tonight is December twenty-three. I used that, uh, time to get caught up on some random things, including this effort. But definitely a lot of stuff still going on as far as big projects, um, private projects. And then the city has all of our things going on, too, with the police station, um, the, the Riverwalk and et cetera, so on and so forth.
So, um, I, my question, I was told by Matt Brown to talk to you about, um, the, um, flood zone for the new police station, and, uh, but they're gonna ask to get FEMA to forget about it? I mean, how do you do that?
Yeah, I can share my screen and kinda show you a, a little bit more. Uh, let me share screen. Okay, so. I'm gonna go to that site. To see you understand this a little bit more. Let me put the aerial photo on. Cause just a bunch of colors and polygons probably doesn't mean so much to you as it means to us when we look at this every day. So, um, here we are at the intersection of Castor Eighteenth and Old Portland Road. This is, um, McCormick Park over here. This is what was known as the Farah Building, currently the, the, the rec center building. Uh, this is Castor Road into the, the Mills Site. Uh, this is Johnny's Tavern. And then this property right here is the one that the city is discussing, building a police station, and maybe also, the emergency operations center with the county. They have one now, and, and the last discussion was, a secondary city hall or something like that. Now, a police station, or even in a EOC, emergency operations center, is, in the floodplain world, a critical facility. And what the floodplain rules say is, um, you cite critical facilities when there is no suitable alternative. And so that's one task to show that you looked at a bunch of sites, and this is the only alternative. The other thing to think about in floodplain world, and I'm gonna turn the floodplain, um, on, is, in this case, you'll see this blue color and this purple color.
Your share screen stopped, I think.
Oh. Sorry. Okay, you can see it now?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. So, um. So here's the, here's the outline of the site. And then, um, the blue is the one-hundred-year floodplain, and then the purple is the five-hundred-year floodplain. And the five-hundred-year floodplain doesn't apply to much, but it does apply to these critical facilities. And there's two issues as it relates to critical facilities. Oh, I see what happened. I think I was maneuvering through my map, and, um, I ended up hitting shop, stop share. So. One. Is elevating the structure or making sure it is outside of the floodplain. Now, you can see that the floodplain is kind of on this side. There was an insistence that the building kinda be orientated like this, which put it close to the floodplain. And so that means you have to elevate it. Well, that's not necessarily so hard. You put fill in there or build it such that it's elevated, to the standard, which is three feet above the hundred-year or to the five-hundred-year, whichever is greater. It reads something like that. So that's how the five-hundred-year floodplain, uh, applies. The other thing, though, that applies to critical facility is, is access. And so you're supposed to have an access that is outside of the floodplain. These critical facilities have very important staff and essential duties for the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And so if they can't get around because of flooded access, unless they're in, um, aerial vehicles, which we don't have as police vehicles yet, um, that's a problem. So, in this case, um, what we've kinda talked about was making sure that there is a high and dry access. And that would be, so if this is your site, um, you could potentially have something that, um, goes along a right-of-way and then comes up this way. Now, eventually, um, we've worked on a partialization plan, and eventually, there will be a street that goes out to, um, one of these rights-of-way over here, but that's probably pretty far away. Now, um, Russ, what you were talking about is, um, we're working with Group McKenzie, and Group McKenzie is gonna talk to, um, some hydrologist folks, um, to see if a map amendment can be done, and there's several different types of map amendments. One, um, does the, the FEMA's floodplain modeling, is it erroneous for some reason? Cause if you go out there and you look at these boundaries, it's like, it's really weird. It's hard to understand why the flood modeling does that, but that's, that's what we have, you know? But that's, that's what we have, you know? We have to go by the flood map. So, can the map be amended based on some error, something like that? You could also amend a map based on fill or something like that. So you could fill this in and then amend the map so that it's out. But that still doesn't change this access issue. So it's going to be interesting to see what they come up with, but that's what I believe Matt is referring to.
Yeah, well, I know it's the chosen site because I've already brought in hundreds of yards of dirt down there to fill it. So it's obviously the chosen site. I do want to see a police station, but I've never felt this was really good because, you know, so you make a special road in and out. So, you know, your response time is a little longer going through a neighborhood or something like that. And, and if everything else is flooded, you can't get there. It just doesn't seem like the great site, but council has made up their mind, obviously, but that's where I stand. It's, I don't think it's the right place. But anyway, I just had to say that.
I know some other issues of that back road. There's basalt outcropping there and some wetlands. So there's other issues there.
Yeah, so early on, I recommended getting a topo and we do have some good topo of that area. Because I've been, you know, the floodplain, the high and dry access, I've been preaching that from the beginning. I know it's in the floodplain. I know the rules we have to follow. The last thing I want to do is for everybody to be excited and to have to be the bad guy. So I've been very adamant about making sure the, you know, upper management is aware of these things. And I'm glad they're going to see if they can amend the map.
Well, but it's going to be hugely expensive, which doesn't have to be because if they cited it somewhere, you didn't have to do all this. Tens of thousands, they've already paid the engineering, I imagine, is staggering and the fill, but I see problems with it, so why even stick with it? But like I said, the council's all ready to go on it. But we do need a police station, so I'm not, I'm not dissing the site anyway in that shape, but it's just, it doesn't seem like logical spot with a floodplain there.
Manufactured structure and then we can move it when it starts flooding.
We'll put pontoons on it and it'll just float.
That would work. Yeah. Once they made up their mind though, it's. Yeah.
I have to say, I'm a little stunned on this because I'm on that committee too. And with this exception of Russ's question, it's never been brought up in any of those committee meetings.
Well, I got shunned off by Matt. He said, I looked it up and he said, no, you go talk to Jacob. And I know exactly what Jacob said because he's been through this and he has not been in a favor of it because of the floodplain, but he's in a rock and a hard spot. But I just see, you know, huge expenses here because of the soils and, and like Dan said, even getting to the site now is going to be a big issue, but it'd be nice if they just stepped back and, but they're bullying ahead and this is a very frustrating part for me.
Yeah, I'm very surprised.
Jennifer, thank you for sharing that. I was going to actually ask if any of this had been brought up by the, you know, during your committee.
I don't recall hearing any of it regarding the floodplain except for Russ's question.
Yeah, my understanding on the purpose of that committee was to determine method of finance.
Finances. And do I recall directly though, that the council, so I know that, yeah, that was the majority of that, that the council, previous council did actually, had passed a resolution or whatever that that is, is the site? Am I correct? Yeah, that they made, that is the decision that was made?
That, yes.
Okay.
They did kind of, they did fall on that, yeah.
That is okay, that official action or resolution or something, okay.
I don't know, I don't remember, I don't think there's a resolution. I think it was a work session vote or something to that effect.
Okay.
I feel like there was, yeah, I feel like there was a presentation from McKenzie that looked at different alternative sites and it kind of bullet pointed the pros and cons of each.
Right. And the, yeah, the one, the one, one site was up on Columbia Boulevard, which I was in favor of because, you know, to have your police central and city policing and be part of the community, I thought was really important. I liked that site, but they said they didn't want that site because there's a sewer line running through it. Well, for the money they're putting down there, you could take that sewer line to Scapoose and back. So, anyway, that's what I feel.
Russ.
So I'll shut up.
No, keep rocking the boat.
So where are we? Are we doing anything?
So we were on the planning department, planning department activity report.
Okay.
I've got one more comment about that. You got these pictures of these trees that were going to be removed in the wetland? And I never understand why tree services always call everything maples.
Oh yeah, that's on county property, right?
Yeah. Because even at the silhouette, I can tell they're definitely Oregon ash. I mean, they're a wetland plant and that wouldn't be a maple.
Yeah.
You ask for a scientist, you go.
Hey, no, those are great comments, Dan. Never give up, man.
So, and they're just cutting them, right? Not pulling up the roots?
Yes, in fact, they talked about maybe leaving them there if they could, but no, yeah, no root cut, no pulling.
So they don't need a permit for that?
Yeah, I wouldn't be as easy if they were pulling roots out.
Okay.
And you're buying Dalton Lake?
Yeah. So, ODOT, you know, this has been a discussion for over a decade. I remember this being discussed when I first got here. But, and you know, ODOT moves slow, but they finally got to the process to declare it surplus and so those wheels are in motion. And I, you know, our city administrator hasn't talked about it much lately. I know some of our counselors have been interested in obtaining that property. So the wheels are in motion to do so. How quickly that will happen, I don't know.
It should be a historic site.
The ODOT liaison at our agency asked me what I knew about the property and I gave him quite a long history that I knew about the ODOT mitigation site and how my mother got chased by a bull there when she was five. Other things like that, they were really important.
An actual cow bull or a bull elk?
No, a cow bull. She had a red sweater on. A friend of mine's grandfather and great uncle dug the canal there to drain the lake so that they could run their cattle out there. And in 1838, she was out there walking with her dad and the bull chased them. They got through the fence.
Now, Jennifer, I did hear your comment about wanting to be an historic site. I have good news for you. If we annex that property, that property is designated as urban open space. Well, let me check.
Jennifer?
Yeah.
Historic from, on what basis? Because of the old shipyards or?
The Historic Society in the last year or so, we've discovered that there was a tribe there that camp that we didn't know of previously and I'd have to do some checking to know all the details, but it's a pretty active place where the indigenous people camped, so.
Okay, I like knowledge and check because I know when there was the discussion about the Schlumberger property and all that, that that was a thing that, anyway, okay, all right, I'll talk with you.
Crest is proposing to do some restoration work there.
Yeah.
With DPA money.
Yeah.
There's a, Patrick, are you part of that Friends of Dalton Lake group?
Yep, yes.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's lots of stuff, I just live down the street from that, so I see lots of things going on there, so.
Yes, that's, so go ahead, Jacob, sorry.
It's okay, that's the problem with Zoom. If we annex that property, our comprehensive plan has that area designated as urban open space, which means if we take it in, we create a new zone that's basically an open space zoning district, which I would think would have similar
Protection.
Similar protection as, you know, declaring a historic. And that's, you know, something that we would work with the planning commission on.
Great.
So you can sleep better at least over something tonight.
Okay. That would be a neat, a neat, not only the Native American aspect, but that northern end, they were building ships there 100 years ago too. Yeah, you can, at low tide, you can still see the remnants of, of the rails and things, so.
If you become city property, will vector control still be blasting the beaver dam out?
Oh.
On a regular basis?
That's a good question.
That, I think vector control has been part, has been invited in, into the discussions along with Crest and things like that because, yeah, so I know there's been active outreach to vector control and trying to talk with them, acknowledging the role they play and trying to keep the mosquito population down, but doing so in a way that is less destructive of the beavers and, and not putting poison in the lake, which is currently happening as well, so.
Somebody I know that works for Department of State Lands has been meaning to open a violation on them for taking out the beaver dams, but they haven't done it yet.
There's three now. They rebuilt, they tore out, they tore out one, two last in the spring and they now have three. They have three down the stream.
It requires a permit, by the way.
Okay, enough about that.
We better move on.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, okay, item 10 for your information. Anything more?
I have two, two quick things. So tomorrow, we are interviewing the shortlist of candidates for the Riverwalk Design and Engineering Construction Documents Consultant Selection. We've narrowed six consultants down to three and there's a selection committee of eight. Patrick was on the committee, so was nine for that shortlist, but it'll be eight of us scoring and making that final selection. We're really excited because I think any one of those three is going to create a really awesome design. There's a public involvement component to the design, there's engagement with the planning commission as part of the design. So it will come before you, whether it's staff or the consultant presenting the design, but your input will be, will be taken into consideration as we move through the design of the boardwalk and the trail along the water. So that's happening tomorrow. The second thing is the St. Helen's Industrial Business Park, which is formerly the Boise Site. We have a master plan for parcelization and a funding infrastructure plan that we just wrapped up. That was done through a grant. It's going before council and will be adopted by resolution, hopefully on the 20th. You know, I'm thinking about this, it might be an afterthought that that should probably come before the planning commission, just as an FYI. You know, typically plans, if they're adopted into the comprehensive plan, do go before the planning commission with a public hearing, but we're adopting this one by resolution and so it doesn't need that level of scrutiny. But I do think you may see future land divisions on the Boise Site and so it's, it's a good document to be aware of. So I think we should talk about getting that on the agenda when we have a quiet month.
Great. And speaking of scrutiny, I mean Jenny and I and other staff here have been scrutinous because it's a tool for us and we're excited to have it, but we wanted to make sure it was a valuable tool and, you know, I applaud Jenny for helping us push in the consultants to make sure we had a good quality product.
Yeah, it was a micromanaged project for sure. But that's all I had.
Jenny, do you want to talk about the OED grant you got for the Fifth Street Trail?
Oh, yeah, if you want to chat about it, I can briefly tee it up if you want to chat more. Scapoose Bay Watershed Council wrote a grant, I think it was around $13,000 to remove invasives and plant natives in the new Fifth Street Trail right of way. That connects Nob Hill Nature Park to the south, all the way to the Towalton Street pedestrian crossing. There's a huge ivy and blackberry problem in that undeveloped right of way. And so we're really happy that Scapoose Bay is sort of taking this on as they've done before in Nob Hill and now it's kind of extending to this trail area. So they're going to pay some workers to just do the hard work of removing invasives. We're excited about that. Was there more you wanted to add, Dan?
No, I just, you said everything I wanted to hear, so that's great.
Cool, yeah.
And it's a nice, it's a nice path. It was flooded over though, a couple of weeks ago. I
Yeah, but still staying still.
Yeah.
Which is a good thing, it's not floating away.
And I did say, I do, I sure do hope that the planning commission gets, is able to see that parcelization Boise white paper die. I saw it and went, just went through it. I mean, a lot of good work in, in there, but certainly I think it's going to be really key for the commission and I'm hoping some other actually public engagement about some of the, some of the other natural resources that are there to be preserved, not just a trail along the creek, but some canvas. There's some canvas metals and things there. Anyway, so, but yeah, that is good work, just it looks like a really very good document, Jenny.
Great, thanks, thanks Patrick.
Great, well, next regular meeting, February 9th. Welcome, Patrick. It'll be great having you and Greg, we appreciate all the ears and don't be a stranger.
I appreciate, appreciate working with you for so many years.
Right. So Greg has been on the planning commission long enough for someone to be born, go through the public school system and be old enough to buy a pack of cigarettes. Isn't that crazy?
If you have a minute, I just have a couple of things I'd like to say.
Sure.
I just wanted, I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the opportunity to serve the city. When I first was invited to fill a vacancy on the commission back in 2002, I never expected to serve, I never expected to serve more than one term. During the 18 years I've served with numerous commissioners from assorted professions and backgrounds, and while we may not always have agreed on a specific issue, we worked collectively to address the matters and find a solution, not always to the satisfaction of the applicant or the opponent. But I'm happy to say that on those rare occasions, when one of our decisions has been appealed to the city council, most often our decision has been upheld. And I'm most proud of the fact that we have an unblemished record before Luba in the Court of Appeal. And I want to thank our top notch professional planners, Jacob and Jenny. It's a rarity in public service to find a professional staff that stays in one place too long. Most are looking to climb the professional ladder. During my time on the commission, there have been only, there's only been one changeover in the planning department. And that was Skip Baker and then he retired and Jacob came aboard. And of course, shortly or a couple of years later, Jenny was promoted and has been a great assistant planner. And over the years, the planning commission has been blessed with a cadre of knowledgeable and hardworking planning department staff. Christina joins a long list of staff. First staff member I remember when I came on was Kathy Payne. Most of our staff have gone on to higher positions within the city government. The one thing that I'm always amazed at is how the staff can make my feeble rhetoric sound so intelligent in the written minutes. But in the, in the final analysis, you know, this commission has worked well together and I just wish you well in the future. I know it's going to be continuously a tugging war between the city council and the state. When I first came aboard, planning- When I first came aboard, planning commission pretty much had a run of the mill. They could, you know, make decisions and nobody ever questioned them or tried to force them to do things. Now you have the state pushing, telling you what to do. You have city council. And, you know, you just have to continue to, to fight with, for what you believe in. I know you guys will do it. So much luck.
Great, thank you, Greg.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. I'll miss making coffee for you.
Stay safe.
Thanks.
Keep coming to the meetings.
Oh, I will be there.
Okay. Christina, you send him a Zoom link.
Great.
Thank you all.
All right.
All right. We will adjourn.
Good night all. Thank you.